Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................... Please remain standing if you choose. Pastor Clayton Wilfer from Joy Church will lead us in invocation.
Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this town that you have given us. I lift up the council and all here this evening. I pray that you give them your wisdom, that you lead them on in your truth and your righteousness, and that your Spirit of peace be with all who are gathered here tonight. And I do pray this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Town Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Earl?
Here.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Here.
Councilman Watts?
Here.
Councilwoman McMahon? Councilman Skilicorn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Here.
Mayor Fidel?
Present.
All present.
Town Clerk, please read the Statement of Participation.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under call to the public should fill out, request a comment card located in the back of the council chambers and hand it to me, the Town Clerk, prior to consideration of that agenda item. Once an agenda item has started, late requests to speak cannot be accepted. When your name is called, please approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. It is the policy of the mayor and council to not comment on items brought forth under call to the public. However, staff can be directed to report back to the council at a future date or to schedule items raised for a future council agenda. It is also requested that applause be kept to a minimum to avoid disruption of the meeting to maintain decorum and provide for an equal and uninterrupted presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have reports by mayor, council members, and town manager. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick updates for our audience this morning, or this morning, this evening. Tells you what kind of day it's been. I wanted to just touch on a few things, particularly the events. The event calendar is very busy. This is our busy season when it comes to events. It's beautiful outside, and we're always excited to host events here in our community. It should be noted that the concourse, Concourse in the Hills was scheduled for this past Saturday. It didn't happen. That was at the direction of the organizer. They chose to postpone, so please save the date for April 19. That is their rescheduled date. We've had a lot of questions as to why, and who picked the date, and what happened. Suffice to say that there are a lot of vehicles out there, and the rain forecasted was a concern. Not that it was going to rain on the day of the event, but during setup. And if the park is muddy, that's a problem to bring in those types of vehicles and things like that, and so the decision was made. The make-up date is not ideal. Obviously, we would have liked to have it a little sooner, but again, trying to align all of the different needs with when is the park already in use, when can we accommodate, as well as when can the organizers be there. I think one of their key members is actually out of the country for a significant amount of time, so trying to align all of those different details. Thankfully, we were able to lock down April 19 as that make-up date, so we're excited to have them back on that day. Of note, the, this weekend is the fair, is the fair. Looks like it's going to be beautiful weather, so we're very excited to have all of our vendors back in a full, full house. March 1st is the Teen Takeover, which is a popular event over at our community center where the local teens take over from 6 to 9. There's games and food and activities and all kinds of stuff, so everyone's invited to join us for that. And then lastly, one question we continue to have is when will our new pickleball courts open? I am here to say they are officially open, which is very exciting. Not only, the courts actually have been open for a couple of weeks, but we actually just got the lighting in place, so they are usable into the evening. So for all six pickleball courts are open and available to the public. So that's my update for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for attending and joining us tonight, either in person, live streaming on YouTube or Cox Channel 11. Citizen participation is a key element of good governance. I would like to wish everybody a happy Engineers Week to one and to all. Engineers play a role in shaping our future. They design and build infrastructure and systems that are, to support our communities and our economies. A big shout-out to David Janover and Andy Whistler for all you do to our town. Thanks, guys, you're doing great. I attended two ribbon cuttings with the mayor. The Hills Smoke Shop, if you haven't been there, even if you don't smoke, they have a lot of nice gifts. It's a beautiful place. It's not just a head shop for teenagers. It's a very beautiful business. A lot, a lot of thought went into the design. And also the Mutual of Omaha office here in town. Ressel Hopkins, she's a charming, wonderful woman, and congratulations and thanks for locating here in Fountain Hills. The Fountain Hills Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts is this weekend. It's going to be an exciting weekend, and thanks to everybody and all the volunteers for making that happen. We expect large crowds, so please be mindful of road closures this weekend if you live here, because there'll be a lot of out-of-towners here and a lot of inconvenience. Lastly, I'd like to express my gratitude to our beloved community center. Community centers bring people together, keep people of all ages healthy and fit, and provide learning opportunities and life skills for our residents. If you just want to look at the activities planned for next Tuesday, peer-led exercise, aerobic chair exercises, video, gentle yoga, women's poker, Spooner Health Talks, intermediate line dancing, hooks and needles, open paint, veterans-to-veterans, American Sign Language, blood pressure check, bingo, mahjong, movie, open table tennis. So we are kind of a retirement community, and a lot of people are looking for things to do. A lot of empty nesters are widow and widowers. If you are looking for things to do other than just watch TV, the community center is chocked with activities every day, and I would encourage everybody to check out their schedule. It's on our town website. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a couple of the Arizona City League of Cities meetings, met with the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, a couple of their representatives, talking about business opportunities, where we're at today, what we can do for tomorrow, how we can improve the businesses in town, how to help them, assist them, et cetera. Met with John Wesley and Farhad Dankovasevic to talk about planning and zoning interaction with the 5G issues. We agreed to leave Chapter 17 intact the way it is with additional caveats to make, to strengthen it without having to rewrite the entire ordinance, but modifying it to some degree. And looking at Chapter 16 and seeing how we can integrate small cell towers, small cell in itself, in accordance with whatever the federal and state regulations are and what the FCC has recommended, although it not have been approved yet. So they've been good meetings, strengthening and enhancing, not prohibiting again, but managing towers in all shapes and forms in town. So that was my week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. I want to, I'll bring up just a few things going on. We did hear a little bit about the, the fair that is this weekend. Just remember that traffic will be tied up in the downtown area all three days of the fair, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Also, feel free to also hop on to experiencefountainhills.org for events. I see there's hikes in the, in the snoring conservancy group, and there's a few other events coming up. And I also want to point out that in the news, a longtime Fountain Hills resident, Sheriff Joe Apio, I guess we're not going to call him sheriff anymore, because he's been named Duke by the Prince of Carriti, Italy, Michael Chan, so he now has the official title of Duke of Carriti. So that's, I guess, his new title. So, and then I also welcome, I see our Italian-American club here tonight, so good evening. Have a great night.
Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you. I'm doing a few things, but I really want to focus on the fact that... Sorry, I want to focus on the fact about, of our dementia-friendly summit, Educating Caregivers. We had it a couple of weeks ago, and it was really, really amazing and informative. We had over 100 attendees and even one or two from out of state. It was really fantastic. We received over 85 reviews and all were five plus. I want to thank Linda Rodi. I want to thank the Dementia Friendly Committee. I want to thank staff, all of our volunteers, all of the vendors, and just everybody who helped put it together and make it such, such an amazing success. This really reflects the purpose of our events and serving our community, so I appreciate everybody's help with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Toth?
Well, we are, of course, looking forward to Concourse in the Hills now on April 19. I know that we are probably all very disappointed that it was postponed. However, Fountain Hills loves Concourse in the Hills. It's one of our biggest events of the year to support the Phoenix Children's Hospital, so I'm sure we'll all brave the heat to still come out and support. And I look forward to seeing everybody at the festival. As everybody knows, that holds a very special place in my heart, because I used to manage it, and so I will be there. I'm very excited to see all of our artists. I know the traffic can be a pain, but it does make quite a bit of sales tax for the town, so. Last but not least, we did have a legislative update with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns yesterday, and I actually did have the opportunity to be at the Capitol last night as well. Yesterday was a pretty busy day for me. And so I did take the opportunity while I was there to just grab a couple of our legislators in the hallway and ask them about the food tax bill, because I know that is a main concern for a lot of people in town. This is the last week, which I believe was mentioned at another meeting this weekend. This is the last week for the first readings in committees for the legislature, so this is the part where we're going to be seeing a lot of the amendments to these bills. A few of the amendments that, from what I hear are floating around include potentially freezing the food sales tax so that it can't go up, but it will be eliminated. Another one would be to limit the types of food that continue to be taxed. And then a third one, which I believe is going to be introduced by our Senator Kavanaugh, if I'm not mistaken. He had mentioned on Saturday that he wanted to propose an exception in the bill for municipalities under a certain population. So I'm just sharing that to say, don't panic yet. We still have plenty of time, and I think some of these amendments are going to come to fruition. So we'll see what happens in the end with that bill.
Thank you. And I attended a few meetings too, as well as an additional ribbon cutting at the Wellness Pharmacy in town. We're very fortunate to have that compounding pharmacy on the north side of town, so if you get a chance, you can stop in there. They're, they're really friendly and a great pharmacy. I attended a Maricopa Association of Government 101 meeting with the town manager, where we sat and they basically went over what they bring to the table for Fountain Hills. So we were really interested in the road work and the road funding that they're, they're talking about. I also attended a G-PAC meeting with mayors and supervisors, and also a couple of legislative updates, and also the mayor's educational roundtable as well. So that's it for the reports by mayor and council. Now we'll move on to the mayor's business spotlight. This is an initiative that I started a couple of months ago to recognize businesses in this town that have been outstanding community members and have been here for some time. So tonight, I'd like to recognize Marita from Euro Pizza. So let me tell, let me tell you a little bit about what I know about Marita and Euro Pizza. Marita is a single parent. She's a real success story, always giving back to the community, and she's, she's done a lot of different charitable things for this community and also provided this town staff with lunch on several occasions, I believe, as well. Her restaurant is one of the favorite places for gathering and having meetings and socializing, and her pies are wonderful. And I don't mean an apple pie, I mean pizza pies. So she's been in our town 24 years, so we want to recognize you and say thank you for what you do for this community, and thanks for being in our town. So I have a certificate here, I'm going to come down and hand to you, and then if you want to say a couple of things about your business, you certainly can.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. This is like being the first, it's an honor nevertheless, but I'm very proud of our town and very honored to be here tonight. My business has been here for 24 years, and I started as an engineer, and I was building the restaurant, and I ended up having it by default, so, but it's a nice, nice incident. I'm building another one, so hopefully you're going to support the other one as well. So I'm very busy and very, very grateful to the community for the support all these years. I raised my kids here, so this is my home forever. I appreciate the new mayor for this initiative, because recognizing the businesses in town, it's, it's a big deal. It is a struggle certain times, but you know, the, the community is very, very helpful and supportive, so I appreciate all that.
Also, her new business is in the same plaza, just a little bit further down, so she's not leaving town. We wouldn't let that happen. And now we're going to have the Stellar Student Recognition, and Councilwoman Gail Earl is going to be the reader and presenter tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we have from Little Falcons Preschool, Misha Manhass. Are you here, Misha? Oh, yes. Come on down, your mom can come with you. As I read from what your teacher wrote about you, Misha, "I am so happy for the opportunity to have Misha in my classroom. She is truly a stellar student. Misha comes to school happy and excited to learn every day. She is a smart and respectful student. She's a friend to all and always kind. Misha is thoughtful to her teachers and peers and can always be counted on to lend a helping hand." Thank you, Misha. We want you to stay up front for pictures afterwards. Next, from Little Falcons Preschool, we, we have Reed Phillips. So Reed is a delight to have in class. He can always be counted on to follow our preschool rules, and Reed is kind, respectful, and responsible. He greets his teachers with a smile each morning. Reed is always willing to help in any way he can and is a friend to all. Reed is a smart boy who loves to learn. He is eager to take part in all of our activities. Pardon me, for these reasons, I am happy to nominate Reed Phillips as a Stellar Student. Now from Mountain, excuse me, McDowell Mountain Elementary School, we have Vivian Corey. Is Vivian Corey here? Okay, I'll read about her. "I am so pleased to recommend Vivian Corey for Stellar Student this month. Vivian joined our district this year, and from the very first day, she has stood out as an exceptional student. Vivian is an incredibly curious and focused student. Her passion for learning is evident in the way she approaches every task, consistently diving deep into the subject matter and asking insightful questions. Her drive to understand and explore complex concepts is truly remarkable, and it is clear she has a natural talent for STEM disciplines. Beyond her academic abilities, Vivian is a student who exemplifies the core values of respect, responsibility, and kindness. She is conscious of others and in and out of the classroom, always offering help to her peers and showing genuine care for their success. Her ability to balance her academic dedication with a friendly, inclusive attitude makes her a true asset to our classroom community. Despite being new to the district, she has quickly become a friend to all and is someone who encourages and uplifts others around her. Her thoughtful approach to learning and her positive presence make her not only a model student, but also a leader among her peers. It is my pleasure to recommend Vivian Corey as Stellar Student as she embodies all the qualities of the Falcon Way. Then we have from the McDowell Mountain Elementary School, Bennett Smith. Is Bennett Smith here? Okay, I'll just read about him. "I am thrilled to recommend Bennett Smith for Stellar Student this month. In our STEM class, Bennett has a remarkable ability to grasp difficult concepts with ease and likes to think about, likes to think outside the box and extend his learning even further. His natural aptitude for learning, particularly in areas such as coding and robotics, has been impressive to witness throughout the years. Recently, Bennett completed a particularly complicated coding challenge for our class robots. Not only did he finish the task efficiently, but he also immediately turned around and offered his assistance to another group that was struggling with the same challenge. His willingness to help others, paired with his deep understanding of the material, highlights his strong leadership qualities and collaborative spirit. Bennett takes his academics very seriously, displaying a strong work ethic and commitment to excellence. His ability to excel on complex assignments while also showing empathy and support for his peers makes him an outstanding candidate for this recognition. Then at our middle school, we have Reagan Jewell. Reagan is always prepared and ready to work. She arrives on time, gathers her materials, and consistently follows all class rules and procedures. She actively participates in lessons and is well-liked by her peers. Her positive attitude and dedication make her a pleasure to have in class. Way to go, Reagan. Then from the middle school, we also have Royal Hall. Is Royal Hall here? Okay, I'll just read about him. "Royal is kind to everyone and makes a special effort to ensure others feel valued and appreciated. He consistently completes his work on time and gives his best effort even when faced with challenging tasks. He listens carefully, follows all instructions, and exemplifies the qualities of an ideal student." Way to go, Royal. Bad living, though. Now from our Fountain Hills High School, Roslyn Rubel. Is Roslyn here? No? Okay. "Roslyn is a pleasure to have in class, always willing to help those around her or the teacher fill the awkward silence. She is a great student, always going above and beyond, and generally adds fun to the classroom." And then last but not least, from the high school, we have Jaden Penya? I believe Jaden goes by JJ. So JJ is a freshman at Fountain Hills High School. He participates in several sports and is an excellent athlete, but more than that, he is a leader. He leads by example, doing the right thing and having high expectations of his peers. Although academics is not his favorite thing, he puts consistent effort into maintaining a good grade point average. He is a fine example of a student athlete and will be an asset to the high school for years to come. Way to go, JJ." So I guess we'll all stand up here for a picture? So I guess we'll all stand up here for a picture? Fine.
presenter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Want to introduce Dr. Jay, our superintendent of our, as you can see on the screen, a letter of grade A. That is huge for our major employer and our school district. Once a year, we ask Dr. Jay to come here to update council as well as the community. So he'll be providing a brief presentation and we'll open it up for any questions that council may have. Dr. Jay?
Okay, thank you. All right. Mayor Friedel, members of the council and guests, thanks for having me tonight. What I thought I would do is just give you an update on, you know, some of the things going on in our district, some of the programs we have. And since I present a lot, I have been using the website for that, so then people can go back and take a look at it again. I do all this work myself to try to save us a little money here. So this is our, this is our new website. And first off, first thing you see is we're really proud of our A letter grade. We've worked really hard over the last, this is my third year, my team and I have been together for the last three years. And, you know, when we started, we had two C schools and that was both our now A-rated schools and the district as a whole is an A-rated district, which we're really proud of. Couldn't do it without the leadership and staff and students and all the community's hard work. I do have a couple principals here, well, they moved right here, so I want to just recognize Barry Pinto, our high school principal. And Dr. Kim Wheeldryer, our middle school principal. And I saw Denise, our Little Falcons Preschool Director here, but she's probably, oh, there she is. Say hi, Denise, thank you.
They like switching chairs on you.
Our elementary principal's doing kindergarten registration tonight, so she's there. So, real quick, I just thought I would kind of run through some of the programs that we have, some of the things we're proud of. So the high school has received an A now for five out of the six cycles. The only one they didn't get was back in '22, and that was the year we started, and that's when we were a C-rated school. And we've worked really hard to get that back. In '23, we got the letter grade back, we kept it in '24, and it's still early for '25, but we've already done some preliminary testing. And with all the work we're doing with Arizona State and our senior internship, I'm feeling good about '25 as well. We have received the U.S. News &amp; World Report Best for the last however many years, and we've been rated an A-plus school of excellence in the past at the high school and the elementary school. So really proud of that. We've worked with a local videographer here to create some marketing videos. You're welcome to share those out on different programs that we offer and different things we're proud of. I'm going to start with some of the programs. So if you have not been to our elementary school, it is a beautiful, beautiful campus. The kids are very excited. I want to say a year after the planetarium is opened, that it is still used weekly, almost daily, so it gets a lot of use. And it is a great opportunity for our kids to experience something amazing, and that's really what I want for the kids of this town, is to have really amazing experiences, and they're getting that now. The library will be adding here shortly, embedded in these wall graphics, AR experiences, where they'll learn about the moon landings, they'll show them where they landed on the moon. It'll show over here different things about the planets, about seasons, about the Saturn rockets, and even the Space Shuttle and things of that nature. So that's going to be coming here shortly. That was part of the original construction, it just took a while for those to be built because they're like museum-type experiences. So we're really excited about that. We've been working really hard on our Portrait of a Graduate for the last couple of years, and this is now embedded through everything that we do, and it's going to take even more of a front seat into next year as we move to even more project-based learning opportunities and for kids to solve real-world problems throughout their school day. And so this, the leadership, critical thinking, communication, responsibility, being self- and goal-directed and problem-solving, all come to a culmination with the senior internship. And we have 115 students that are participating in either a senior project or senior internships here through the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know of any other school district that does that, that makes all the seniors do that. And I can tell you, I've sat in on a couple of the presentations as we have some early grads, and they're doing amazing work, and we're really proud of that, that the kids are out in the community working. One of our programs we're most excited about is FHU. This is a high school program. And so this is a partnership with Arizona State University, so we call it Fountain Hills University. Our partnership with them is being highlighted actually by Arizona State. They're going to be coming out to do a media day with us because we have taken this to a whole nother level for the partnership. What this is, is we're now offering our students 54 ASU courses that they can take while in high school. And what this really satisfies, I should say, is this is what's required to get a bachelor's degree in, at Arizona State, U of A, NAU. These credits are required to have these 35 plus whatever you go into if you're a major and minor. We can now get, our students can now get 30 of those credits done while in high school. And we are able to do that at no cost to the families as well. And the way we've been able to do that is partially through some grant funding and then partially through donations from community members that support us and really like the work that we're doing when it comes to being innovative with our programming. So we have 114 ASU classes being taken this year through Fountain Hills High School. We start their junior year, and they can take three classes their junior year and six their senior year. That gets them to 27, and they can pick up one extra one along the way to get them to 30. This has been one of our most popular programs, and the kids are really enjoying it. What's great about it is if they do have a misstep for some reason with the scores and their grades, they get to decide which classes go on their transcript and which ones they don't want to put on their transcript. So it's really a win-win for them. And it also is dual enrollment, so a kid taking English 101 and 102, they now, that can, that can count towards senior English. So it gives them a chance to get two credits for one class. So this has been off-the-charts good for us, and we're really proud of it. Little Falcons Preschool's full, they're doing great work over there, and they're highly rated, and Ms. Matous has been with us 34 years, what is it, 34, with the district, and she is doing great work over at Little Falcons. We still have AP Capstone, which is our highest diploma program, so students that take that will go and do a one-year study there in part two of the program. And when they finish that one-year-long study on a topic of their choice, they then defend that to the faculty, they take exams, and if they pass all that, they get a diploma from us and from the College Board. So this is our honors and gifted track where it culminates with AP Capstone and FHU. At the middle school, we have Innovate 21, which is our honors and gifted track there. And Dr. Wheeldryer has got this off the ground. It was something we were working on when she first started, and she's taken that idea and brought it to reality. So this is, again, honors science, honors English, and honors social studies in a cohort together. And then they go out for math, a lot of them go to similar math because they're typically high in math. And then they have electives of their choice that they can do throughout the year. This program now has over 100 students in it, and we have seen quite a few students coming to us from neighboring districts to get into this program, which then feeds in, again, AP Capstone and FHU. We are the one of the only schools I know of in the state that has free before-school care for our families, so they can drop off as early as 7:00 a.m. And that has been really, really important for the family, families in this town. I know I struggled with that when my kids were little. This is, we have about 90 kids signed up for the program, so it's a really popular program. We have, our new playgrounds are a year old now, and the kids are still enjoying them, having a great time playing. We've been really pushing back on, you know, devices and trying to teach parents that phones and social media and those things can be very dangerous to kids, and that they need to be out playing. And so we've been really pushing hard on play. We have multiple recesses throughout the day. I've told teachers, anytime you feel like, hey, the kids need a little break, they need to refocus, take them outside for a little bit, let them play, come back. It does, it does great things for them. So the playgrounds are fantastic, we're really happy to have those, and the kids are really enjoying them. Outside of that, I'll just talk about our sports for a minute. Our sports teams are off to a really great start. We're, our boys and girls teams right now for basketball are in the playoffs, so our boys play tonight. If they win, they go to the quarterfinals. And the girls team, which I am assisting coaching on, because I say yes to pretty much everything, and excited to do it, but our girls team won last night, and they are now in the quarterfinals. If they win Friday, they will go to the former Suns Arena, the Coliseum, for the semifinals. Boys win on Saturday, they'll be in the semifinals. If they both win those, they both be in the state championship game. So we have a shot at a couple state titles here, and we're very excited. We also have a girl wrestler who will be competing in the girls' state championship. She's number two in the state right now, she won her sectional, and she would be the first female state champion in wrestling in school history if she wins that coming up here in the next couple of weeks. Outside of that, I'll just share that our new trimester schedule at the high school is working really well. Our kids have an opportunity to take a lot of classes, and that has opened up their schedule and given them a lot of opportunity. We still have one of the highest percentages of kids that take EBIT. I'm a big fan of EBIT, all three of my kids have attended EBIT and will. My son is going into criminal justice next year, and my daughter's in the nursing program. So one thing I just want to share is for, you know, we always deal with the fact that we have competition around us, a lot of choices. But one thing I'm just going to share is, and I'll talk about my own kids since I don't have to worry about any kind of violation with that, but my daughter will graduate from Fountain Hills High School, she's been here since kindergarten. She will graduate with her CNA certificate in nursing. She will have her first year of college done through Arizona State. She will go to NAU on the Lumberjack Scholarship, which will be free tuition. When she gets there, she'll finish her bachelor's degree in probably three years or less, she'll go straight into a nurse practitioner program and will come home in the same time that most students will graduate from college with that kind of degree. My son's going into criminal justice, he'll get 16 credits from EBIT towards college plus the 30 from ASU. He'll have 46 college credits when he graduates from Fountain Hills High School, and he wants to go into forensics. This is an opportunity every kid in the school district has and that they can take advantage of, and if they follow the pathway, I think they're, they're going to be off to great success. We are really working hard on preparing kids for their future, and if that future's a career or it's college, either way, we have them covered. So I'm really proud of the work we've done. The elementary school, under the new guidance of Ms. Reichler, who can be here tonight, she's been here 14 years, she's doing amazing work at the elementary school. So I'm really proud of our district, and I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Dr. Kane, what can we do to help you?
Well, I think the biggest thing we need is just, I still feel like there's always a perception that things are better elsewhere. And as a 21-year resident in this town, I just, that's one of the things I struggle with, you know? I think it's important to, you know, eat in town, shop in town, go to church in town, go to school in town, all those things. So I think that's the biggest thing I struggle with, is there's still always a perception that it's better somewhere else, and that's hard to, it's hard to get past. Like I said, I know the district's had up and downs, but every district does, every school does. And where we're at right now is a good place. I think the hardest part we're struggling with is just lack of kids. And I'm expecting, we'll see what our kindergarten numbers look like tonight, but we'll have 115 seniors out the door, and I'm hoping for 50 kindergartners in, so I gotta always make up that number every year, and it's getting harder and harder to do. So I think just helping pass the word, perception, everything I'm sharing with you is on our website, these are real things and good things that are happening in our town.
Okay. Councilwoman McMea.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kane. Listening to the presentation, it's just very, very powerful and amazing, and I'm sure all the parents really appreciate what you're offering their children. It's really unprecedented, and thank you for the success of all the students, for A-rating and the amazing success of both of your children. I know you do a lot of, you're dedicated and you are very powerful in what you do and provide for our students and our community, and thank you for overcoming and working to overcome the perception that education is better elsewhere than our town. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, I have a good team, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Earl.
I too, excuse me, I too really appreciated your presentation and really impressed that we now have the A-rating, that's great. And I also wanted to know, you know, we talked about doing everything in town here, and students sometimes wanted to have a part-time job. And you mentioned there's internship here?
Yes.
And also, I don't know, it's, I believe it's kind of new, but at the community center, they now can hire students that are 16 to 18, I'm not sure if you're aware of that or if you...
I was not.
So that's something that's new, and I'm wondering if there is a program, because I know, I went to school at Suaro High School, and my senior year I worked part-time and I did get credit for that. Do they get credit if they work somewhere at all for...
So for the internship, they do get a credit for that, and it is a board-approved requirement for graduation. So they do about, somewhere between 40 and 60 hours with the business, and then they do additional work throughout the school day during what's called our advisory hour. So they do skills assessments, they build a resume, they do interviews, like, we do like a mock job interview, things of that nature. So yes, they do get credit, and we do have a job board, so if there are any positions you want us to post, we can certainly do that.
And would they get credit if it's a paid job? Or you're saying just an internship?
We do, we don't have anything in place now for, outside of the internship. We do work with, say if a student has, their job helps to keep the family's rent paid and things like that, we'll work with them as maybe using that as a job experience, but that's, they got to go through the principal for that to make sure. And then we ask them if they do that. So let's say they worked at, say, like Safeway, we would ask that, can they work in the meat department or in the produce department to do something else to try to build their career in that, in that area?
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Kelly Vina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Jay, thank you for being here tonight, and I too am very impressed with your presentation. I admire your work, you're a hero to me. Thank you for the tours that you provided to me and all the insight that you've provided to me about the school system. Your passion and your intelligence just cannot be matched, and I hope our community knows how lucky we are to have you in charge of the Fountain Hills Unified School District. You're doing an amazing job. I know in parts of the country, they've eliminated their honors programs, and in Fountain Hills, not only have you kept the honors programs, but you've accelerated them. And I've seen the labs, and I've seen what you've done, and that's exceptional work to take our gifts of students and give them the tools they need to excel. During your presentation, I know you have a good relationship with ASU, and I applaud you for giving college credits so children that are on the track to go to college have that opportunity and get one foot in the door while still in high school. And I was just wondering if you could just drill down just a little bit, and I know we have good relate, you have good relationships with EBIT, but for those students that are interested in industrial arts and the trades, could you just describe the relationship that you have with EBIT?
Yeah, we have a great relationship. I've known Dr. Wilson a long time, and they always are really good about helping us out. We're going to be, next year, only going in the mornings as part of, you know, reducing our budget, but they were great about ensuring that all of our kids could get their classes. And there's over 50 programs there. We take the kids on field trips there to see it, and it's a, it's a really good opportunity. I mean, my kids share, my son went through firefighting and now nursing and police. And I will just say that the kids enjoy their three hours over there. It's all hands-on, it's a little different approach, and with our trimester now, they don't have to make up classes they couldn't get before, like on online class. Now they can get all their credits between the classes we offer at the end of the day and the classes they get in the morning. So it's a good setup, and they still have off-campus lunch, we're one of the few districts that still do that. So they, they go out into the community, a lot of the communities have, the restaurants have Falcon lunches for them and things like that. So their schedule's nice, they go in the morning, they get back, they have about 30 minutes of downtime, they take an ASU class during that time, then they go to lunch, they come back, and they have two periods with us over a trimester, which gives them their three credits they need to graduate on time. So our kids are actually graduating now with 27 credits instead of 22, which is the league minimum, and I don't know... now with 27 credits instead of 22, which is the, the league minimum. And I don't know, very few districts require that. So they're not only more prepared, but they're given an opportunity to take more classes. And, and they've been good about it. They really like what we're doing. I have a student advisory board. I actually met with them today. And they're really excited about that. But again, I appreciate all the, the nice words, but it's all my team and my students and the work that they do. So we, we just keep coming up with ideas to try to grow our, our schools. It's just getting harder to do. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Watts.
Thank you, Dr. J. Very powerful presentation. So powerful that I'd even consider moving to Fountain Hills if I hadn't already lived here. So my question really is, how does our economic development department and our town work with you to promote the town? Do we integrate that type of a presentation so that when we do, we're enticing people? Do you have any idea how we do that?
I agree. And I have, if you see here, I have a link to our town.
Right.
So when people are looking at our district, they can, they can go check that out. And I've worked with Betsy on, on having things on here, but videos. And then I went through and took a bunch of different pictures from different places I could find showing off our town, a town like no other. I, I agree. I will just give you a quick summary. I had the Realtors, I do Realtor tour every year. Okay? So I just had it last week. I had 30-plus Realtors come. And that's my way of making sure when they're selling houses, they know we have what we have available and that you don't have to go somewhere else. The part that was kind of, you know, I guess it depends on where you're at and, and, and belief of where our town is at. But when they did their business meeting, they had a whole section on, you know, all the listings they were sharing about around the group, right? And so there's about 12, 15 listings they went over. The, the cheapest listing was 1.2 million, right? So, so that's the hard part. And, and that's the beauty of Fountain Hills, it's a great place to live. And there's just not a lot of opportunities, I think, for young families to move here. It's very challenging to have the money down to interest rates where they're at and, and then find a home that, that's going to fit for your family. And it wasn't like that 20 years ago when I moved here, you know? It was totally different. So I think that's one of the challenges we run into is, is just the fact that it's, it's a, it's a very nice place to live. The second thing is, we just had our 20-year reunion for our state, first state championship basketball team two weeks ago. And when I met with those kids and their families, I went around to every parent that came and they all, mostly all came. And I said, you still live in that same house? And they said, yeah, yeah, yeah. I said, y'all gotta move. And they said, we're not, we're not moving. And I said, if you don't move, I, I don't get any more kids. And I, I said, you gonna have more kids? They said, no, we're not doing that either. So, so that's just a dilemma. And I'm in the same situation. I don't plan to move. All, all my kids will be out in the next two years and I don't plan to move. So when, when houses like mine, that were the cheapest in town in 2004, don't go back on the market, it, it just leads to a decline in enrollment over and over and over again. And there's a lot of factors, but that's one of the big ones. So I don't know how you fix that. That's just a reality of our town. I don't know if it's fixable.
Right. And, and much like we want to support our businesses, business community in town, I'd like to find, I don't know if we can. I don't know if we can legally market on behalf of the, the school district or somehow integrate marketing into and by the school, because I don't envy you one bit. 160 outgoing and 50, 50-plus coming for a decade. And it's like, really? How is that possible? It's not sustainable. So whatever we can do is...
Well, and we will have budget cuts. So they will be coming.
Mayor, Councilmember Watts, to answer your question, Dr. J, myself and Mike, our community relations director, met with Dr. J today. We actually meet bi-monthly to just make sure we're sharing what's going on from an economic development world, what is being planned, and then what the mayor opened with. What can we do to help you? So we do promote the school on our town website. And then we've actually shared, and I appreciate our new PIO, where he's open to, we're not just putting government-y things on social media. Everything is the town. Our business community is the town. The school district is the town. And again, you guys have heard me over and over again, I've been doing this for over 20 years. If we're wanting to diversify our major employers, we need to make sure we're supporting our school district. Because if you're looking at bioscience, healthcare, people who are wanting to move here, it's not just a building. The building is made up of people and CEOs and employees are looking for quality schools and then a quality workforce. So we've brainstormed some of the stuff that's going on with the, the athletics, the, the letter grade A. Those are things we can certainly market and put it on social media. It's just making sure that we're connecting with the right people. And so Dr. J will be connecting the right person with Mr. Mike Pelton.
But even something as simple as a link to this website and promoting it in bold letters or something, can we do, do we, or can we do something along those lines to promote school?
Yes. So I believe it's under our about page, but we can get the, the link where we do highlight our schools. We're also working on a more robust marketing brochure that again will include the school district and not just the Fountain Hills School District, but then beyond, ASU, U of A. Because again, when you're pitching to businesses, they want everything, the whole quality of, of life.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do appreciate the work the economic development team's done. I've been telling my high school kids, you better go to that Dutch Brothers, or you know, you better go support it. You've been telling me you got nothing to do. So I know I go. I tried to keep Dunkin' Donuts in business myself, but that didn't work out. But we will support it. So the more we can do together, and the town has always worked with us, great. So I, I, I'm very happy. And if any of you want to take a tour, please let me know. I know we do reach out at least yearly to our legislators. And I know a lot of you have come and visited with me over time. And our locals do as well. Senator Kavanaugh always comes when I ask. I just had a conversation with, oh, who was it? I just had a conversation with, I'm drawing a blank here, you're making me nervous now. It'll come to me. But I offer out to anyone who wants to come visit, we'll, we'll always do a tour with them.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. Yep.
Our next presentation is going to be by our fire chief, Chief Ott. He's going to give us an overview of the first year here with Fountain Hills and what the outlook is for the next year. Chief Ott, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Much like Dr. J, we give tours to anybody that wants to come by any of our fire stations. And I find it hard to believe here that I'm, I'm standing up here after the first year of our fire department. So January 1st was our birthday, the first for the Town of Fountain Hills Fire Department. But really, where did we come from? We, we were part of the town from the beginning. Rural Metro had a relationship with, with MCO back as far as 73. And it was a small contract to do a little security around the construction site and then put out a fire if one came up. And we kind of transpired, transposed from there into a fire district, one of the many district, or three or four districts that MCO had in the beginning before incorporation. And then for some reason, Rural Metro kind of convinced the town that doing away with the fire district was good business and it would keep Rural Metro here and keep the district from starting their own fire department. So we had roots as early as 2000 to have a Town of Fountain Hills Fire Department. Just wasn't in the cards at that point. And in, in the early days, we were surrounded by Rural Metro. They were in Scottsdale, they did Rio Verde, they did Carefree Cave Creek. They also took care of Fort McDowell and Salt River at some point. And then those started going, slowly going away. We were the last contract for rural in this area to, to go away. They still take care of the Rio Corridor by subscription service, but we're, we're here and part of that had to do with, with the McGrath study that, that came about and made it a little bit more palatable, if you will, for us to go ahead and take that over as a municipal, a municipal department. The rural contract, we had eight firefighters a day and two chiefs that did not include ambulance service. So... Okay. Where we are. I'm pretty proud of how our first year has gone. As I said, we were born on, on January 1st, but it, we had some deep roots coming into that. Kind of the numbers, we did, in our first year, we ran 6,151 calls. Previously, we'd had about 5,000 calls per year. Calls for service have been up. Part of that is, is our relationship with our surrounding departments. Our fire calls, we had 66. And the big number and kind of always surprises me, we had ran 1,025 snake calls. But, and I think that might be up a, a little bit and might have a, a little bit to do with why we've, we've run more calls. Our first year was a pretty good year for snakes, I think. Running calls, Fountain Hills to other jurisdictions in the first year, we, we had our services out for 104 calls. And other jurisdictions to Fountain Hills, we had 133 calls. So not quite even, but, but pretty close to it. So we benefited as much from our neighbors as they did from us. We had almost 8,000, or over 8,000 training hours. And part of that is, is we're now part of the region for training, which was not an opportunity afforded to us in the past. Conversely, the last year of the rural contract, we had about 7,000 hours of training. Part of what we do were included in East Valley ladder training and engine company training all across the region. Most of those are quarterly training, but we've also added training with Fort McDowell and Salt River on a regular basis. We train with Scottsdale frequently as well. You can see in the one picture, that was a, kind of a engine familiarization meetup with the Scottsdale engine, that's the closest one to us. They're stationed over by the Mayo Clinic. We're a member of TOPAS and MRDC for our dispatch partners. And that's a key to our success as well. The high-quality services that we're getting from the dispatch side of things is a huge increase from where we had been. And it gives us the ability to communicate with all of the, the departments across the region. We're also managing our own fleet. It's been a challenge at some point, but I, I think we've done pretty well. And we also had a little bit of catch-up maintenance to do that hadn't previously been done. We've been able to train our, our members to fill bump-up positions. That kind of helps us with our staffing levels. So we'll have acting engineers, acting captains, and acting battalion chiefs. We've been able to maintain the minimum regional staffing of four, four members per truck, which is a safety and efficiency model that's, that's pretty much standard across the country. We've been successful without the rural contract or the rural staffing pool. That was a little bit of a challenge because they, they had 175 people that could help fill positions where we have 30 to fill our 10 per day. But we've been able to manage that relatively well. So as I stated, we had eight per day and two chiefs previously. We have 10 per day with two chiefs, a training captain, an admin assistant, Tiffany, and our HR person, Jeanette, who's, without, without those two, we would have struggled a little bit. Dave Trimble's helped a whole lot. We came in and rewrote the employee manual for the town to be able to include the fire department in that. So that, because we are a little bit different and a little unique, not everything for every employee worked, but we were able to manage to rewrite some things so that includes everything. And then also kind of puts us in a, there, because our work schedule's different, is an example. We work 48 hours at a time where most town employees come in and either work eight hours or, or 10 hours or some part-time employees. So with Dave's help and McGrath as well, we kind of went through and rewrote the, the town policies and town handbook, I think, to benefit everybody as well. That's kind of what we like to do. We like to be here and be part of it. And as many people hear me say, full service. And if that means that we can help out another department and help out, straighten some things around, we're, we're more than happy to be part of that. We're also in control of the decisions that benefit the town, which had not always been, there'd been decisions made that weren't always in the best interest of the town. We're now in control of that and I think that's worked really well. I'm proud of that, too. And then kind of on just the transition side of things, we've had two people leave, younger guys that went to a couple of our regional partners where they thought that their longevity and, and quality of life for their family, and they all both lived on the west side of town. I agree with Dr. J. It's, it's hard to lose people to, to something that they think is better when we know what we, what we have here is the best that it can be. We did, we were able to hire two people that were on our employee hiring list from before. So that streamlined filling those positions. And last year, we were also able to send two EMTs to medic school. So we have two more medics in our thing. And kind of part of where, what's happened in this last year, Rural was also sold to a company that predominantly sells fire trucks. In that sale, the AMR, who ended up selling Rural Metro to a company that owns Burnley Mountain, they decided to keep all their ambulances. So that's a challenge for us moving forward. So where we had had a, a fire rescue up here before, we would have lost that had we not done this transition. It would be not as well off with the ambulance service that we have right now. AMR's done an outstanding job to add a, almost no cost to us. And we're benefiting by a little bit of rent from having their ambulance stay here. I kind of joke with our chief financial officer that we're not really a revenue generator, but I've got that rent coming in every month. Don't like being a landlord, but every little bit helps. So then the big question, where are we going? Where are we going to go from here? We're going to continue to improve and provide high level of care for the residents and visitors to Fountain Hills. We're going to continue to train regionally. An example of that is we've got a McDemme, Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management Wildland Tabletop set to go in April. And that will align us with our regional partners, being the county, state forestry, Tonno National Forest, Rio Verde, Scottsdale, Fort McDowell, Salt River will be a part of that. And the Red Cross is also going to participate in that tabletop. It'll give us the ability to have a fire scenario. And we're using a wildland scenario similar, similar to the fires that we've had up in Eagles Nest, because that has the greatest potential to affect our, our neighbors. And we'll also include the Red Cross for some evacuation things. So we're looking to promote our staff, not necessarily add to that staff. We've got some opportunities coming up where it'll be beneficial for us to have on-staff battalion chiefs instead of bumping our captains up to them. And again, that is kind of centered on safety and, and being more efficient for the town and our regional partners. We're also doing some succession planning, which in the fire service is typically a thing that's missed quite often. You get thrown in a position one day, they say, well, you'll make a great battalion chief, you'll make a great deputy chief, you'll make a great fire chief, without ever really getting you to that point of helping you along the way. So with our bump-ups on, on our people, we're kind of getting them in those positions. You might find out that you don't want to be an engineer because you've been working as an acting engineer and you'd rather stay a fireman or you'd rather bypass that step and go to a captain. So those are things that, that I think greatly lack in, in my industry. And we hope to do a better job for that. And that also goes to help retention with the, the workforce that we have. One of the big things coming up is, we'll talk about this a little bit later in future meetings, but auto aid versus mutual aid. And mutual aid is the system that we're currently in, where we have to ask for help from our neighbors when we need it, with the exception of Fort McDowell. We kind of have a enhanced automatic aid with Fort McDowell. And we get dispatched just like we're in the region and having the most appropriate, closest truck dispatch the call. I think we can do that with, with relatively low cost, moving into auto aid, which will dispatch the closest unit regardless of the, the municipality that they work for. It's worked well across the, the rest of the region. And when there's issues where you might be running a little bit more than into a neighboring jurisdiction than, than the jurisdiction that owns that area is, an example would be that, that Glendale ran a lot of calls in Phoenix. Phoenix ended up putting a fire engine in one of the Glendale stations to kind of balance that out. So the system has a, a way of being able to work itself out. It's a no cost on that part of it. And those are things that we'll go deeper into, but there would be a cost associated to us at some point. One of the other things we'll be looking at is a, a certificate of necessity or a CON for ambulance service. ambulance service. That would be a 911-only type of service. And the difference is, you do 911 service only, or you do 911 service and inter-facility transports. And most 911 ambulance companies right now see a little bit more money, quicker money in the inter-facility. They're not challenging municipalities coming and looking for 911 CONs. Along with that, as many things in the fire service is kind of a cut and paste. Somebody else has done something very well, we adapt to that. Lake Havasu City, who's another MCO, or McCullough property, had gone through the process of a 911-only CON, and they've offered help to us. And I think maybe you've talked to their city manager down there at one point. And there are a number of other departments around us that have done CON successfully. Scottsdale just recently received theirs, and it can be a lengthy process, it can be an expensive process, but there's also ways to kind of cut some of those costs down. So, I'll be putting together what that looks like, what the projected cost would be in timeframes on that process for us. We plan on doing a small renovation at Station 1. There's some, a couple of areas that are still in the 80s, and one of the restrooms down there is in dire need of a little repair. We hope to do that with the help of local contracts, contractors, and job order contracts that are in place with the town. With that, we also have some equipment to replace moving forward. We have applied for some grants. We won't know until after the budget is finalized whether we've gotten the grants, so we've got a little contingent set aside to be able to replace that equipment that's, we desperately need. An example would be, our radios are no longer supported by Motorola. They work fine, but if something happens to them, we crack a case, one gets damaged, one loses its programming, we don't have that support to do it, so we would be down that vital piece of equipment for us on our portable radios. With that, are there any questions?
Vice Mayor Toth.
I just have a quick comment, if that's okay. Chief, I don't think you know this, but a very close friend of mine had a medical emergency a couple of months ago and needed help. And I have to say, I was so incredibly grateful that she was in Fountain Hills when that happened, because I knew every one of those guys that came to help. And she felt very well taken care of, and we just, we love our fire department. So, thank you to you and all of your staff. We're very lucky here.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you. I'll try not to tear up on that, but I'll have to say that the men and women that I work with here are some of the best I've worked with in my almost 40-year career, so.
Councilwoman, Callie Vianakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Chief. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I think I speak for everybody on this dais, that again, we look back at the first year of the Fountain Hills Fire Department, and the proof of the pudding is in the tasting. And it's been a spectacular success due to a lot of hard work. And I don't know how you guys do it, and all the coordination and all the reports that you give us, but it sounds really complicated, and it sounds like we have the right people doing the job. I, too, have a Hannah story of thanks. Being a person five years ago that was bitten by a rattlesnake in my own home, and you guys got the call, and I wouldn't leave to go to the hospital until that darn snake was picked up by you guys and taken out of my house, because I didn't want to have to go back to the house and deal with that snake and not knowing where he was, you know? So, I guess my only question on that is, do you relocate? I know we don't euthanize them, we relocate them. Do you relocate those things far enough that they're never going to bother anybody else again?
The areas that we would have to relocate them where they would not come back again are full of houses. So, it's kind of touchy. We've gone the gamut of what we've done with snakes, and 25 years ago, it was easier to find places to put them here where they were less likely to find their way back. But they are territorial. They like living here as much as we do. They were here first. They like the things we like. When it's cold, they like being warm. When it's warm, they like being cool. When they're hungry, they like to eat. So, we try to get them to the best place that we can, as safely as we can, and we always tell them not to come back.
Okay. Well, next time, if he does come back to me, his fate is not going to be as kind as what you guys did. But thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I, too, have a snake story. They came to get a snake out of my garage, and I couldn't even get in the house, I mean, literally, until they came. And I felt bad calling them, because I thought, "They have other important things to do." But they didn't kill it, they took, I don't know where they took it, but they took it somewhere. But anyway, I want to say thank you. Thank you so much for your dedication and the dedication of our firefighters. You guys have really created an amazing fire department that we're all really proud of, and I look forward to it continuing. And again, thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here and serve. We've got a number of our people that are residents here and have been here for a long time, and it's kind of funny, over the years, it had gone, there was always talk that Fountain Hills is going on its own, and we'd see influx of people that would come up here, never wanted to work up here before, but because they thought we were going on our own, they wanted to work here. And the core group of people we have here are people that wanted to be here, stayed here the whole time. So, raised their families here, sent them to school here, and just enjoy being part of the community.
And I just want to say, it's been a seamless transition, at least on our side. I know you had a lot of work to do to get that done, but we appreciate the professionalism and the quality of service is really outstanding, so thank you.
I appreciate that, and I'm glad that you didn't have as many sleepless nights as
Okay, now we'll move on to the call to the public.
Yes, sir, you have six slips this evening.
Okay.
Good evening. Liz Gildersleeve, Fountain Hills resident. I actually have a few compliments tonight and a couple suggestions. First, I wanted to compliment the town manager and the mayor on the town's improved social media, particularly on the town's Facebook page. That has become my new go-to for learning about what's happening in our town, and I must say, it's much more substantive, timely, accurate, and better written than it was, say, about a year ago. So, whoever's managing the social media, well done. Regarding town news, I'd also like to suggest that any press releases for the town go to other news sources, like Arizona Free News and the Arizona Daily Independent, if it hasn't been done so already. Both of these publications have substantial subscribers, and they publish news from throughout Maricopa County. It would be good for Fountain Hills, Fountain Hills news to be shared with them. People have changed drastically how and where they get their news, and it's important to make sure Fountain Hills is represented on those popular sources. In fact, I'd encourage you to even ask those new outlets and perhaps other outlets to cover these council meetings, particularly on evenings like this when important issues, like community residences, are discussed, as these are issues that impact all cities and towns. An example of a missed news opportunity is the recent MCSO contract renegotiation and savings to our town. I didn't see it mentioned in our local newspaper when it happened, despite being very newsworthy. I learned about it, rather, from a post from the Ktar radio station. Another compliment, I'd like to thank the mayor again for starting the coffee. With the mayor events, I attended the first one at Mountain View Restaurant. It was very well-attended, and was helpful to be able to ask questions and get immediate answers from the mayor. It's a great way to be transparent and introduce residents to local businesses, too. As an aside, I left with two very delicious desserts from that restaurant, and they didn't last very long in my refrigerator. And finally, one last compliment, I'd like to compliment Councilman Skillicorn's suggestion at the last meeting to put the town's public notices to a competitive bid. Excellent idea, especially as people seek out other publications for news and updates. That could be another substantial cost savings to the town. So, thanks again for your attention tonight, and keep up the great work.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, town staff. Shelby Blacker. One year ago, the moving trucks came and picked up all my stuff and started bringing us to Fountain Hills, so it's one year today. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the grant process and the things that have been said, and the misconceptions about the grant and the study that was going to be done. And there's a lot of interesting comments in media about, you know, what that was for and what was going to be done with it. And inevitably, all you guys voted against it, and I'm thankful for that, because we didn't need to waste town money on that. But that leads me to the idea about, although people talk about that grant process, no one talks about Prop 479 and the half-cent sales tax. And Mayor, I have to say that our town manager is absolutely amazing, because all the questions that I end up giving to her, she gives me very lengthy and detailed descriptions and explanations for what's going on. For those that don't know, Prop 79 is essentially an extension of the previous voter-approved Prop 400 tax. The town's current focus is on completing the widening of Shea Boulevard eastbound from Palisades to Fountain Hills Boulevard. It's about two blocks. This has been in our capital improvement project for several years and has faced internal and external hurdles. I look at it as an opportunity to slow traffic down on Shea, and I don't know why we're actually thinking about spending money on widening Shea. The Palisades and Seguaro projects are further down the road, and the current priority is Shea. But why is that money going to these types of projects? Generally, the projects operate on a 70/30 cost share with MAC, so the town is still going to have to come up with 30% of the money to fund these projects, even though we're getting money from MAC. Now, when I went through the pamphlet, the guide, about Prop 479, the transit investments that are raised from that are 33%, but the arterial streets are only 18%, and we get a tiny fraction of that. As a matter of fact, when you look at the arterial streets section, our projects are not even listed on this sheet as, you know, major projects for arterial plans. So, I don't know, I mean, our town manager has to play the cards that she's dealt. She has to deal with this project, and she has to make do with it. But the town council can take a look at this, or look at future projects or future bond initiatives, and say where we need that money to go to and what we need that money for. In closing, I'd like to say that I did notice that our former mayor made a comment that was published in this booklet, where she talks about our shared responsibility to fund projects on Loop 101 and Loop 202, and that she felt that the population of Fountain Hills was actually going to grow to 30,000, but she doesn't say by when. I think we got dealt a short hand here, and I think you guys could do better. Thank you.
Altitude adjustment. Mr. Mayor and council members. Matthew Corrigan, I want to make it clear tonight that I'm speaking as an individual. My opinions are entirely my own. I just want to clarify that. But I also have a compliment for the council, so. But first, at the January 27th, 21st council meeting, the mayor and council majority wisely rejected Division Zero Road Diet Plan through the federal fiscal year 2024 SS4A Grant Program, saving taxpayers $300,000, of which $60,000 would have come from Fountain Hills. This plan is rife with diversity, equity, and inclusion policies. As Mayor Jerry Friddell has clarified, we already have an excellent traffic committee, and the $60,000 could very well more adequately go to washes and other infrastructure. He voted no. Councilwoman Gail Earl asked, "How is this plan racially equitable?" Good question. "And how does climate change relate to streets?" She voted no. As reported in the AZ Free News, Councilman Alan Skillicorn also made a rational argument opposing the grant, saying, "This plan includes a commitment to gender equity. Why?" This plan mentions greenhouse gases seven times, mentions climate change nine times. Our town and our nation have rejected wokeness and DEI. Today is a new era of common sense. This is not for our town. He voted no. Councilman Rick Watts brought up the fact that as much as 10% of the money appropriated by the grant goes to consultants, and that bicyclists don't necessarily follow the traffic laws. He voted no. Councilwoman Hannah Toth expressed concerns about Division Zero hidden language and noted that often these political buzzwords are part of the liberal agenda. She voted no. All three public speakers in call to the public spoke in opposition to the grant and cited examples of being it replete, that it was replete with DEI language and complexities of government adherence to multiple standards. On the other hand, Councilwoman Callie Vianakis had concerns and similar, as she said, Coves -esque language, and also expressed concerns about fraud and danger. She voted in favor. Councilwoman McMahon said she supported it, and that it was just grant money, and it was only $60,000, and she voted in favor. I'm thankful to the council, the majority council, who was thinking of getting it right and our taxpayer money spent well.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, town staff. Appreciate your attention. My name's Virginia O'Brien, and I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for 24 years now. And the purpose of my being here this evening is for an item that'll be on an agenda that's going to be appearing, I don't know when, but in the near future. My purpose is to bring you up to speed on community involvement and activities in regard to that particular agenda item. The item I'm speaking about is a special use permit in reference to a cell tower 65-foot tall on the location of Generation Church on Ironwood Road, right here in Fountain Hills. My neighbors and I became aware of this right before the planning and zoning meeting and the planning and zoning vote, and my neighbors and I went door-to-door and knocked on doors to see if any of them knew about this proposed cell tower that was going to go into our neighborhood. I'm here to tell you that fortunately, the majority of my neighbors who actually can see that church and are within a little over 301 feet from that church, didn't get letters, knew nothing about it, and we had 72 hours to react and get information back to planning and zoning. In 72 hours, we got 73 signed petitions by residents in our neighborhood and beyond opposing the permit and asking P&amp;Z to deny that permit. In fact, that evening, after I spoke, and I believe six other persons spoke at the planning and zoning meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend to Town Council that that permit actually be denied. The reason I'm here tonight is to tell you that the neighborhoods are very, very aware of this ongoing situation, and that there has been a continuance at the request of the applicants. We're watching, we're monitoring, we're staying active, and petitions are growing, and they're growing beyond my capability and my neighborhood's availability to get these pieces of paper and documents out there to satisfy the need for signed petitions. So, as a result, I have gone forward and had it placed on the fountainhillsafetech.com website. It's an electronic website where you can look up the petition that I have authored, and it is out there everywhere, to review it, take it into consideration, and if you agree to sign that petition online, and then it will be submitted and forwarded accordingly and appropriately for your information. I know that you feel very strongly about community activism and opportunities to participate. I have never been prouder to be a resident of Fountain Hills with the support and the signatures and the wanting of more and more information on this subject. So, on that note, I just want to thank you for your time and thank the attendees for listening and everyone at home. Again, if you want more information on denying the 65-foot tower in a residential community that's zoned residential and waive all of the ordinance that exists to make it happen, please sign the petition on fountainhillsafetech.com. Thank you for your time.
Beth Culp.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I have a couple of quick things tonight. The first one is I would like to respond briefly to, and hopefully the last time we have to talk about, the January 21st meeting and the ethics complaints. That is in the hands of the outside investigator, and I just want to comment that helped me a lot to actually read the minutes because following what was happening, it was kind of, it was difficult, lots of people talking over one another. But one thing I did want to directly address is the very adamant comment Crystal Kavanaugh made at the last meeting where she said there was no Rott ticket, names didn't appear on Rott's advertisements or signs, and it didn't very, take me very long, and I had help actually. I got this from a lot of different places, but, but here is what I call a political advertisement. It was on Reclaim Our Town's website. It says, "Vote Conservative for Fountain Hills and Your Country." It says, "Paid for by reclaimartown.com." Does say, "Not authorized by any candidate." And then it says, "Time to return Fountain Hills to its roots. Conservative Councilwoman-elect Earl has been elected in the primary." One down, three to go. The choice for mayor is simple: conservative Republican Jerry Friddell. And then it goes on to say, "For council: intelligent conservative Watts and Corrigan." So, I just want to bring that to the attention of the council. Nobody was imagining that there was a Rott ticket, and to make it the subject of an ethics complaint seems silly to me. And also, I don't understand why anybody would think it would be bad to be called an endorsed candidate by Reclaim Our Town. The second matter I want to bring up was briefly mentioned earlier, and that is the MCSO contract and the press release. I've requested the documents, and I will be prepared at the next meeting to address them in more detail, but Mayor Friddell issued a press release that said, "I am pleased to announce that the MCSO contract for Fountain Hills residents will go down roughly 6%." A short time after being sworn in, Sheriff Jerry Sheridan and I met. I expressed my concerns about the contract, and to say he listened would be an understatement. This is a win for our entire community. The press release creates the impression that a meeting was had between the mayor and the sheriff, and the sheriff decided to cut the cost of the contrast 6%. That didn't happen. I'll be back at the next meeting to provide a more thorough report. Thank you.
Lori Troller.
Somebody looking for this? Lori Troller, resident. Dave, happy birthday. Congratulations and thank you. Yeah, fire department's awesome here. This is just a friendly reminder to the town. We got to stay current on our records opened or public records requests. What's prompting this is back in December last year, I was, I came up and I was talking about the Suaros, all the Suaros that were popping up, and I didn't know what they were at that moment because I had just found out about them, that right before the meeting. So, we placed FOIA requests, and we got the response back, the typical response, you know, that you're supposed to get in five days, that says, "Yes, we received your request." And I, Justin put the information together. I know he did that. I've talked to him. It was never sent out. So, here's my point is I live on public records requests. I couldn't have done what I do without being able to get information. We got to stay with that. If we don't, but there's state law, there's fines behind this, so we just, we got to make sure that we're, we're getting those out. That's my only comment. Thank you.
That's it, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda items. The minutes are the only thing that are in there, so can we get a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilicorn. Councilwoman McMahon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Earl.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cali Vianakas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell. Seven to zero.
Did you get Rick Watts, Councilman Watts?
My apologies, Councilmember Watts.
I feel so neglected. Yes.
I've been asked to try and rotate the votes, and I'm getting used to the switch. My apologies.
Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and we've got consideration and possible action for the recommendation and appointment to the Strategic Planning Commission. So, I've got the following appointments. Nick Proctor to be filling a partial term, Patrick Garman for a reappointment, Randy Crater for a reappointment, and Bernie Hoynley for a reappointment. Can I get a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Earl.
Yes.
Councilmember Skilicorn.
Yes.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cali Vianakas.
Aye.
Councilman Watts. Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. And then we've got John Wesley is up next. Before we get to that, John, I want to make a couple of comments on this item. This item is actually on the... Oh, I'm sorry. It's the next one. It's on the signed ordinance. Go ahead.
Mayor and council, good evening. At the January 21st council meeting under future agenda items, Councilwoman Earl brought up and got two seconds to have staff to look at and revise the signed ordinance as well as the community residence ordinance. So, both of those are on, for discussion this evening. I'll kind of cover maybe both a little bit here in my introduction this evening. And so, we appreciate that opportunity to take a look at those ordinances again and see where revisions might be needed. With the statement that was made, however, at the council meeting to look at and revise, we really didn't have much direction in terms of what the council wanted us to do, what the issues might be, what the goals are, what types of things they might want to see changed. And so, that's what we're back here for this evening primarily, is to get further direction based on a council discussion this evening about what it is you would like staff to look at. And so, that's the first thing with both of these items, we're looking for, for that information. I did want to also then comment that with most of the items that I believe will come up, that the process will be to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission because the items are in the zoning ordinance, so it takes their review and recommendation before the council can act. And just understand that once we take that step and go to that commission, public will be invited to come and bring up their topics, issues, concerns, suggestions, as well as the P&amp;Z commissioners reviewing it. And so, it's, will take a little bit of time, and it may end up covering more things than what the council directs this evening, but that's certainly where we'll start, is what the direction is from council on these items. And then my last point that I wanted to bring up before we let you all start talking about it is just to remind the council that in addition to those two items at the last council meeting, we're also given direction to work on the wireless communication ordinances, as Councilman Watts has brought up a little bit earlier this evening. And we're also working on a downtown overlay ordinance, and it's a time where we need to be revising our building codes to the 2024 codes, and we're working on that through this spring also, and hopefully have ready for you before you go on your summer break. So, it'll be important to us to hear from the council what your priorities are for staff to work on as we tackle these issues. Any questions for me before you start your discussion?
Councilwoman Earl.
I think someone mentioned at the last meeting at the end about, about parking downtown or something. Is that... Oh, okay, that's down the road.
That one's not me, so I didn't...
That's not you?
That one's not me as far as I know at this point. I think it's going to be Mr. Weldy on that one, but we'll arm wrestle, maybe, over and see, see who wins.
I think to that point, it's just John is trying to emphasize that there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on, so, you know, we'd like to make sure that we're focusing on the top priorities first, first things first.
Councilman Watts.
How about that one? I got a vested interest, John, so I like seeing 5G and getting Chapter 16, 17, Resolution 28, 18, 20, 18, 18 consolidated so we can continue to work on that. And I, based on our discussion, we were talking about somewhere between probably 90 days to 270 days, three months to nine months to be able to get Chapter 17 done, the ordinance attached. So, I, like I said, my vote is 5G. And my assumption was that when we do building codes, we adopt the current international building codes.
Can I have a point of order? Mr. Mayor?
What's your point of order?
Well, I think at this time, we should be discussing regular agenda item B. That's what we've been tasked with to do right now, which is to provide staff with direction on updating the town's sign regulations containing Chapter 6 of the zoning ordinance. I think that talking about 5G is something that will be in a different agenda item than...
I think that John Wesley brought up the fact that he wants to have a priority.
But it has been agendized tonight.
But the question was posed by Director Wesley, "What do you want as an order of priority?" And I'm trying to answer that. In relation to the signed ordinance, where does it fit in the grand scheme of things? There's four or five things that were addressed or that were brought up, so how do we want to prioritize? And nobody spoke up, so I said 5G. Let's start. Secondly, I would say the building codes, if they are the adoption of the international building codes on plumbing, electrical, mechanical, et cetera, I don't know whether we edit them or not, so that was a question back. So, if you've got a comment about what you would like to see, then I suggest you make the comment.
I would like for our town attorney to make a comment as to whether we're violating the open meeting laws right now.
Mayor and council, I think that the best thing to do at this point is that if there's direction, if there is direction to be given with respect to the signed ordinance, start with that with respect to changes that we'd like to see. If there's less of a priority compared to other things, I would also ask that you maybe make that known during your comments in the context of the signed ordinance. How about that?
Works for me.
Thank you.
Rachel.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to turn the conversation over to Councilwoman Earl. She's the originator of the request, so perhaps she can kick off the conversation of what she'd like to see changed or amended in the code.
Thank you. So, well, it was just...
Excuse me, so are we now discussing the agenda item, Mayor?
Councilwoman Earl, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I had, part of this got started with the meat box shop, and they're having issues with, I don't know if anybody knows where they are, and I had a hard time finding them the first time as well, that they be allowed to have more than what I think right now they're allowed to have is one A-frame, but so that we increase the amount of A-frames allowed. And I don't know, do I get specific now? Or just, because this isn't actually, I mean, this, okay, I'll just say what I, they are, right now, you can have one A-frame per door, but they have a double door going in. I don't know if we can say that a double door equals two, or if there's a business that's tucked in away somewhere that they can have more than two A-frames so it could be out where people can find them, like directional type signs. The other thing that I wanted to, to help the businesses was there's a thrift shop or thrift store in the area where there's the Grapables business area, and it's along El Lago. They have some railing there that they wanted to be able to put out, like a banner, or they had, actually, they showed me a permanent thing to hang there during business hours, and it would also be able to go, also want to let the businesses that have the railing that face the fountain to be able to do that during business hours so that people could find them. They're kind of tucked in there as well, especially the ones on El Lago. And then also wanted to, I wanted to address the sign-free zone to revise that because that was like all over the place. I did, this is how, I did give a copy of my suggestion or just a circle of that to John, of where that could be, just a suggestion, and then it can be discussed. And where I marked it in black would be the areas that would be sign-free. Zones keeping, still keeping the entrance to Fountain Hills nice in those areas, and then the downtown, the Golden Eagle Park, and then also the McDowell Mountain Preserve. Within that, there's also the, we had some other here. Let's see. On our, we have on medians, the center and the side roads. So, side road of the, not allowed, I'd like to change that to allowed anytime. Also, on the, they have, it's on this page, I don't know if you see this page. Does that help? Oh, does it? Oh, yeah. That's just my scribbling, so please forgive my scribbling. Then also the sign-free zone area, A-frames and yard signs at street corners. It says, "Anytime sunrise to sunset." I'd like to remove the sunrise to sunset part. Other side streets right away, to also remove the sunrise, sunset part. Then also, and that's where I had the allowing more A-frames than just two. And then the banner, I'm not sure, I understand a whole lot about this banner business is only permit, let's see, with a permit approval anytime up to 30 days. But if they're, you know, do they have to apply every 30 days? I think that's a lot to just allow them while they still have their business to be able to put those signs up if they're with the recommendation. Then if you scroll down... Then if you scroll down one more, it was then to change the, for private residential properties, this is just for the, you know, temporary signage during, these are during election season, those two things, I guess, was instead of two yard signs, allowing four yard signs, which is a maximum of 12, with a maximum of 12 square feet, I believe there. I think it's statewide, it's allowed 16, if I'm correct. Am I correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Earl, yes, for the state statutes for political signs, and the right-of-way, yes, it's 16 feet. I'll note that on this one, that it's six square feet per sign, and so a two.
Oh, I thought it was per yard. Well, it says two yard signs.
Two yard signs, but it's six square foot per sign.
Okay. So I guess I would, I don't, I would like it to not be reduced to only, however we change that, put it back, that they can have more than two signs in their yard. Okay, but you can do your maximum of the size, so then they'd have to also look at that one, it's a multi-residential property, how to work through that. That's it. Those are my recommendations, so anybody else give you recommendations.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wesley, would it be possible, instead of changing the whole sign code to allow two signs for business, to accommodate two businesses, which would be the box meat shop and apparently Grapables, could those two businesses just apply for a waiver or an SUP to add an additional sign, so we don't have to change the whole code to accommodate two businesses?
Mayor, Councilwoman Callie Vianakis, we don't have that mechanism in the code now. That would be a code modification to allow for special use permits for modifications.
Okay, thank you, because that might be something that Planning and Zoning might want to take up, is just doing an SUP or some kind of a modification. If there is a business that has exigent circumstances, like two doors in the front, and they think they need two signs, then instead of just allowing two signs for every business in the town, which I think would look for a lot of clutter, so that's what I wanted to add.
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Director Weldy, would you mind getting up again and just scroll back on the changes you had there?
Wesley.
What did, what did I say? Oh, sorry.
We're in a change wall, it's okay.
Okay.
Which page did you need, sir?
So is the red resort band, is that the first slide? So you really, the original intent for that was for resorts, and frankly, the current red zone is not resorts, you know, I think that we've gone way beyond the intent of that from the legislature. So I would point out that I would be okay with Councilwoman Earl's recommendation there. If we can go to the next slide. So based on previous discussions over time, I think these are pretty good, there was a specific that I had for the A-frames, and I don't know if this is something that the rest of the council would be interested in, but initially I was interested in a one-square-foot A-frame or two six-foot, square-foot A-frames. So that situation, you know, if you have the corner lot and things like that, we want two. So they'd be a little bit smaller if you had two, but if you had one, that would be a little bigger, and frankly, these are pretty much standard sizes that businesses are already using today. That was the reason I came up with that one. If we could go on to the next slide, please. Director Wesley. This one I was, I was okay with, but I did want to ask the rest of the council members if they thought, so six square foot is a two-foot by three-foot. And I just think there's some properties that I think that had something that was a little larger than that, and maybe eight foot is the better number. But I'm willing, I'm, you know, I'm agreeable to whatever the consensus of council is. And I think that was all of my comments. Well, I think it's appropriate to talk about timing, that some of the things that we talked about in the context of the sign code is that there are priorities that, I know you guys are working behind the scenes, so I know that Councilman Watts and yourself, you know, Director Wesley are working on 5G, I know behind the scenes you're working on the code updates, and some of that is okay, that happens behind the scenes, and then you present that to us. I mean, like the code updates, that's typical, normal, you update to the, you know, building code, and I assume also the fire prevention code also. Those are normal things that are, you come to us, you know, with, because there's, they're not that extensive usually either, so. That's why I'll point that out, is that in that context, those are still priorities, but I know you guys work on that behind the scenes, and then, you know, when it's ready, I guess it's ready too. Thank you.
Town Attorney?
Mayor, I just wanted to jump in on the sign-free zone areas. It's not going to, a question that's going to be resolved tonight, something the council's going to have to consider as it looks to amend that map. The statute says, it's 161019F, that as Councilman Skilicorn suggested, that the generalized intent focuses on commercial tourism, commercial resort, hotel sign, hotel zoned areas. The rub is that you can't have, you can have non-contiguous zones, but you can't have more than two zones within a municipality. So as the council considers this at a future date, we're going to need to go back and look and make sure that if we start to break them up into non, currently they're contiguous, if we start to break them up into non-contiguous zones, we're going to have to prioritize which of those areas we want to fit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just jump into this moment to ask, make one statement, ask one question. Just to clarify, on this particular item, as far as the sign-free zones, this does not have to go back to P and Z, this is not something in the zoning ordinance, so we can just bring this back directly to council as, you know, we work through this particular issue. And then my question is back to Councilwoman Earl in terms of this slide and the comments here for modifications. These are stated as they apply to signage during election time. And are you only looking for changes for election time or general changes?
For election time.
For election time only, okay.
Councilman Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little concerned about an SUP concept, because I think with, if one business sees that another business has two signs or multiple signs, whatever that is, that the only way the other business can get the two signs is by applying for an SUP. So you disadvantage the business financially by having to apply for the SUP, and the cost of that doesn't seem to be reasonable. The rest of the comment, the rest of the requests are universal, they apply to anybody unilaterally, but when you have a special use permit that a lot of businesses are going to look at and say, I want two signs, or whatever number we come up with, and they have to pay for that, I don't think that's fair, I think it's a bit discriminatory, so I would not be in favor of SUPs.
Vice Mayor Tull?
Thank you. Now, everyone knows I get fired up about the sign ordinance. When I first ran, this was one of my number-one priorities, to get the sign ordinance intact, because it was one of the number-one things I heard of from the town. Now, I want to add that I do agree, as far as the priority list, I would prefer 5G first, however, I still want this as a priority. I agree with Councilwoman Gail's suggestions, I believe this would then come back onto an agenda, and we would look further into this. I do have one comment to make on the sign-free zone that was based off of that legislation, that being intended for tourism and for resorts. If you look at that map, that's every major road in town, and the entire road, the part where you're just driving past houses. And in order to make one connected area, they took out almost every major corner in town. I frankly find that despicable. So I'm happy that we're looking back at it, we'll find a way to make two connected zones and protect the areas that are important to us. This is something that many of us up here promised that we would fix, and we haven't yet. And I have to say that I'm very glad that Councilwoman Earl is here to make sure that we do that and hold us accountable to that promise that we made the people of Fountain Hills, all four of us.
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you for letting me have one last bite at the apple. There is actually something that I did forget, and it was the page after this, I mentioned the banners. So I remember Director Wesley driving around with you, and we're looking at, and there was a business we found with a banner, and as we talked about it, we're like, we thought it was pretty quite reasonable to make the banner a one-year, so the 150 days, we want to change that, but then the, also the 30-day one. So a lot of these banners are from restaurants, and they use them during football season. Well, 30-day, like, let's say they have a banner saying, join us for Monday night football. Well, if they're going to have it for 30 days, it really doesn't do them a lot of good. So I think that that one, like, I think the appropriate one is 90 for that temporary banner, I know there's a size and everything that we discussed before, I'm sure you remember the conversations, but then the other one was, I want to suggest, I'll throw the number out, I'll say, I'll say 364 days for the other one. That's what my suggestion would be.
Mayor and council member, we do have that also, just as included here, we do have the one year for the new business, however many actual days or whatever we put it there, we do have that one.
Vice Mayor Tull?
I'm sorry, I realize I forgot one of my points. I want to very much clarify that I'm not interested in looking at an SUP process, I'm interested in fixing the ordinance. Our duty as a council, especially a business-friendly council that ran on helping the businesses of this town and the people of this town on this ordinance that they had their concerns about, our duty as a council that made this promise is not to put the burden on the people. I'm not interested in that, I would not vote for that, not supportive of it, thank you.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're running in here tonight is why I thought it was a bad idea to mix so many different ordinances, like 5G, signs, this, that, because we start losing our way of what we're talking about, and that's not good, you know? There was changing the sign ordinance, which is what I thought was on the agenda tonight, and then there's changing the section of the code that has the political sign ordinance. So we're talking about two different things here. When I talked about an SUP, on the screen right here, that's for sign code requirements during the election season, okay? So that wouldn't really apply to the box meat shop or Grapables, because we're talking about the election season here. So you see how we're getting off track when we're not talking about one subject and we're just kind of throwing stuff in the mix? Because we're not talking to each other, we're talking at each other, and we don't even know what we're talking about. So when I did make the suggestion not to have two A-frames signs for every business in town, I think that's better public policy than giving every business two hair salon, two nail salon, two, 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 it's clutter, and we don't want to be known for clutter. I don't think that's a good sign. Now, if you want to talk about the political sign ordinance, then let's just put that into a whole different conversation. But I do recall that when we did the A-frame signs, as it pertains to the sign ordinance, that we did allow for an additional A-frame sign if there were two areas of access and egress, and that's in the code right now. If there are businesses that have a front, like Euro Pizza Cafe, we heard about tonight, parking lot, and then in the back by the lake, she is authorized to have two A-frame signs at her one business, because that, again, we discussed this, and that seemed very reasonable at the time. But for every business to be granted two signs, why do they need it? They have one storefront, one door, why do they need two signs? So again, it just seems to me we're just calling for clutter, but I do wish that we have these conversations, that we would just talk about either the upgrade of the sign ordinance or the election season ordinance, and if we can just keep those separate, then we'll all know what we're talking about.
I think it's all covered under the sign ordinance, though.
And I apologize, I'm losing my way too about what, about what we're talking about where. But I did have, to follow up on Councilmember Callie Vianakis's comment, I do have one point that the council might need to clarify, again, as we go through this process, probably it's not going to get resolved tonight. Keep in mind that as we're talking about either any sort of process for approval of a sign, or different types of signs that any business or person is allowed to put out, we are still restricted from regulating based on the content of the sign. And so whatever we end up coming up with, I want to make sure that we put it out there early and often, that it's not going to be, if you have a hair salon, you're entitled to have two signs that are, that say, come to my hair salon, right? Because we just can't regulate based on that. So we're going to have to figure out some creative way to make that, this idea, work without delving into content. So I just want to put that out there.
Mayor, if you don't mind me jumping in again also, in response to.
Before you do, I also thought we had in the ordinance that if somebody had a blind corner, that they were also allowed two signs. I think we covered that before.
Mayor, I don't remember anything specifically that way, it was based on the number of public entries, that they could have more than one A-frame sign, that most places would also have an opportunity for the yard sign, the banner sign, the, as far as temporary signs go.
Because there were, there were businesses that were set far back off of Parkview. One was allowed up, and one was allowed by their door.
Right, yes, Mayor, they are allowed to be out into the right-of-way, away from the business, they don't have to be right there at the door, so that is in the code currently. But Mayor, going back to kind of what we're talking about, so the one exception to the sign ordinance itself is the sign-free zone. Everything else you're talking about this evening is in Chapter 6 of the zoning ordinance dealing with signs. What I was questioning a moment ago with Councilwoman Earl is, in terms of some of these changes to allow, say, the signs in the median, was that to make the amendment only for election period, or is that for every day change? And she clarified that she was intending these changes be in the sign ordinance, but they apply only to, so right now there's an exception in there for the state-allowed political signs during sign season. You know, that's, that's the part that becomes a challenge for us every year, because we've got a state statute that doesn't match town code, state statute that isn't REED compliant, and we're trying to be REED compliant with our code, and meshing those two is what creates most of our challenge during that period. And so, and right now, it's, our sign code exception is only for, based on the things that go to a primary. So if it doesn't have a primary, then we don't have that exception. So again, we can work some of those things into our code, again, in the sign ordinance, to say for any election, here's what, you know, the rules are, where we kind of make that deviation. Or again, to allow four signs in the yard during this period of time before an election, rather than just the two. So again, it is changing the sign ordinance, it's just for a particular topic, is the main thing I'm hearing.
Vice Mayor Tull?
Just to clarify what I was referring to were the proposed changes by Councilwoman Earl. I'm supportive of agendizing those. It's sounding, if I'm understanding you correctly, and please correct me if I'm not, it's sounding as though that would become two separate agenda items, one that goes to planning and zoning first, and then one that comes straight to us, and that would be that map. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor, that is correct. The council can consider directly the sign-free zone, that does not go to P and Z, but everything else we're talking about that's in Chapter 6 of the zoning ordinance would have to go through P and Z.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. So again, that's what I'm supportive of, it looks like that there's not a suggested motion, you're just looking for direction and head nods, so that is my direction, thank you.
Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you. I have a question, if you don't mind. When did you receive this request for going through in detail what the sign ordinance, the changes that Gail Earl suggested?
I received this particular. I received this particular information late this afternoon, so I could present it up here this evening.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, if you received it, did you receive it in time for the agenda? Because if so, why isn't it in the agenda? Because when I first read this agenda item, it wasn't clear what was going to be asked or discussed. There's no, like, goal in it, et cetera. And so I wanted to, I want to know if, why this wasn't put in detail on the agenda. You didn't have it? Okay, thank you. And again, I want to exercise my concern about, one more time, we're looking at the sign ordinance. And as stated in the agenda item, we've already, you know, we've already legally reinstated it. We've already looked at it in October 23. You've spent hundreds of hours on this at a cost of salaries, benefits, the town, et cetera. And I'm surprised we're looking at it again. And I just, I just feel like it wasn't, it's not clear in the agenda what the goals were. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Toth.
I just wanted to remind my fellow council members and possibly the public that we had, gosh, over a year ago, made an adjustment to our council procedure, that if we are proposing a significant amount of amendments, or a significant written motion or proposal, that we write that down and forward that beforehand, so that it can be on the screen. I'm just reminding everyone that this is normal procedure, as per actually the former majority on this council.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that my understanding was this was just a discussion tonight, and I wanted to have everybody see a visual, because I am visual, of what my suggestions were. I asked, should I print this out, just so everybody could see it? And the suggestion was, if I could give it to you, you could put it up here so everybody could see it. So we're not voting on anything tonight. It's just to give you, Councilwoman McMahon, to be able to see what it was that I, my suggestion was. And also, I don't think we're just talking at each other. This feels like a discussion to me. Councilwoman Callie Vianakis.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis.
Yeah, I'll make it real brief, Mr. Mayor. For the people that are interested in this sign ordinance issue, a year ago, the Fountain Hills Independent Times did a full-length feature story on the history of the sign ordinance, going back 20 years. And I would strongly suggest, anybody that's got a dog in this hunt, or wants to make suggestions, recommendations, familiarize yourself with how long this has been litigated, over 20 years, and all the iterations. And it always generally ends up in the quicksand. And I think other councils have run into the same thing. So I would just, just to put that out there, you know, there was a really good synopsis of everything that's happened before us, and that people should familiarize themselves with it.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you. Erin, can I please have clarification on when we're required to share information that's received about the agenda ahead of time? Is that just physical paper documentation, or is that just apply across the board?
Mayor and council, if I can be real honest with you at this point, I don't know anymore either. Because we have gone back and forth on this issue so many times. And the pendulum has swung back and forth about what's acceptable to share beforehand and what's not. So I don't, I can't sit here today and tell you that I have a clear answer for you, because we've gone round and round about this issue for two years. So Rachel, it looks like you have something that you want to add.
If you don't mind.
Yes.
Just to chime in, and I did, I spoke with Councilmember Earl, and she and I spoke at length. I know she spoke with John. And what this comes down to, and I think everybody uses the word transparency a lot up here, and we talk about wanting to be transparent with the public. The bottom line is that when we have a paper copy up here, the public can't see it. The people at home can't see it, the people in the audience can't see it. And we've gotten a lot of feedback that says, when you guys do that, when we have these items up here, that negates the public engaging in that process. So in order to make sure that the group here can see it, as well as those watching online, this, the screen is really our best tool for that mechanism, to help that and to include that, and so everybody can understand what edits we're talking about. Thankfully, we appreciate that there was something prepared, so that we could put that up there to begin this discussion. It is deep, and it is detailed, and it is, does get muddy when we talk about the election season versus standard season, versus a sign code that gets very, very technical, very, very fast. So I believe this was just, again, to sort of kick off the conversation, to say, these are some suggested edits. There is no action being taken tonight. It's for discussion. And that's what we want. We, when we receive that information that says, hey, I want to talk about the sign code, it's helpful to say, great, let's bring it back so we can talk about it, and we can have this, versus receiving direction at the end of the council that says, I want to see edits 1, 2, 3. Here you go. Right? And then we still have to bring it back for discussion, and that's when we get into, we get stuck. So Councilmember McMahon, I appreciate your questions about where this came from, and why are we doing it this way. Honestly, it's a result of wanting to make sure that the public can see what we're talking about and discussing, so that there is that transparency out there. I hope that helps answer.
Councilman Watts.
It's a suggestion. Having been, had the pleasure of going through this with Director Wesley, when I'm planning a zoning, it was intense. I'd suggest that we say, here's the part that's, the sign-free zone and the political environment, the highlighted areas that Councilwoman Earl has presented. And then, secondly, take the five items that are kind of highlighted, and say, here's, kind of like you would do in a Word document, and you would say, here's what is, and here's what I'd like to see, so it's clear that we can enter it into next agenda, and say, this is what I see today. This is what I'd like tomorrow. And now you've got two components. One, that's pretty clear, because it's a sign-free zone. And two, it's the five bullet points, and we should be clear, and then we can have civil dialogue about what it really is.
Vice Mayor.
I, obviously, I can't speak to the intentions or inner thoughts of Councilwoman Earl, but I'll say that the reason that I'm supportive of this, and bringing back the sign ordinance, which I can understand questions as to why we talk about this a lot, I talk about it a lot, is because it still hasn't been done right. It's the same reason that other items are still in the works. And it's unfortunate. It's just as frustrating to those of us who keep bringing it back, as it is to everyone else. So that's my last comment.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You said you were going to be short.
And I'll be short again. But something that I think needs to be said, and it goes on Councilwoman McMahon's concerns about documents being provided to this council prior to the meeting. And I just want to remind everybody, up on this dais, some of you are new, and you weren't here, but many of us were, including Erin and Rachel. And when the 5G thing came up last time, and I did an amendment to the motion, that was a pretty extensive amendment to the motion, and I did speak to Mr. Wesley prior to, and to Erin, and I presented that as a written document that did make the screen, and all holy hell broke loose on this dais, saying that that's not the way it should be done, and Brenda's circumventing the circumstances. And I was berated by this council. And this is exactly what's being done now. The same thing, it's being brought ahead of time. But at this time, it's okay that we're doing that. And so to Erin's point, it's no wonder you're confused, because when some people do it early, it's okay, and when some people don't, it's not. And so what are you supposed to do? It's an impossible situation. So I just want to remind everybody that we do need to get a policy established, when we can present things beforehand, and when they should be turned over. And if this was turned over this afternoon, it can be on the Chiron screen, and it can still be emailed us three hours before, when it gets submitted to Director Weldy. I mean, we could do both. We could get the information early, and it could be presented live to the audience, so they know what we're talking about. We can have them both.
I need, I think I need to remind you that you did an extensive rewrite, nine paragraphs of that 5G code. This is three, six-word change, and a map that's got a couple circles on it. A vast difference from what you did before.
A little more, a little less.
Quite a bit. Anyway. McMahon.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that we have five council members sitting here that passed this ordinance and voted on it. And now we're revisiting it as if that didn't happen. In addition, you know, not getting this information in writing ahead of time, while I appreciate your explanation, it's not timely for the public. You don't see anybody making public comments about this, even though it's just for discussion. I'm not buying it. Because I didn't have the information, and the public doesn't have the information. They didn't receive notice of what's really being discussed here, or even anticipated to be discussed in the agenda or in this. And I think that we're doing a disservice to the public, because it's prevented them from even submitting public comments, online or otherwise. And again, this sign ordinance, it sounds to me like, you know, Hannah is saying, well, we didn't address this before. You have. In fact, I'm pretty sure you voted for the town ordinance. I mean, the sign ordinance.
I think I also need to remind Councilmember McMahon that the last time that sign ordinance was passed, Brenda said we were going to have to probably make some more adjustments to it.
So what? And now said to compare it to 5G. We're not talking about 5G right now.
So it wasn't done right the first time.
Yes, it was. You voted for it.
As Councilmember Toth stated.
You voted for it.
You're out of order. So are you.
Ladies.
I'm still beginning the conversation, in response to what you're saying.
Mayor, if I may. So the goal this evening was to see if we could get some direction from the council, other than just look at and revise the code. So I was glad to have the opportunity to have some questions asked by Councilmember Earl ahead of time, as she was trying to formulate her thoughts to present this evening, so we could get the ball rolling. This is the start of the process. We will be going to P and Z, where the public will continue to have the opportunity to provide input on what changes, if any, are ultimately recommended. And we'll come back to council at a public hearing, where the public will again have the opportunity to provide that input. So as the start this evening, I'm hearing some tweaks, both to some permanent sign regulations, and to some temporary sign regulations, particularly as they apply to election signs. And so that's where we will start in our discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, they'll be open to the public and the commission. They may broaden it beyond those things, as they see a need. They may just focus on those things, if that's all they see the need to deal with. And then whatever comes back out of that discussion, through the public review, we'll be back for full council discussion.
And then the public will be able to weigh in as well.
All the time.
Yes. Vice Mayor Toth.
Thank you. I'm just going to clarify that at no point did I say we had not talked about this. I said that it hadn't been done right. And I meant it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Earl.
Yes, if we're getting into the weeds, I just want to clarify that I did give the map to Director Wesley a week ago. And I would like for us all to not be getting so upset up here. This is just, we're just revisiting the sign ordinance. I know some of us have had some issues when we did the election, and where could we put our sign, or not put our sign, and somewhere being taken, and just trying to figure it out. It was quite confusing. So I, and my understanding tonight was, it's just a starting point, that the public is going to get to weigh in. They will be able to at P and Z. We will then have an agenda item in a meeting, when they can come and talk about it. So it's just a starting point. So I would just like us all to get along. Thank you.
Councilman Watts.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Director Wesley has his arms around this one. I think you keep it in two buckets. One is the political sign issue, and the other one is the five points. Weave it into the ordinances, come bring it back, and we'll vote on it. It's pretty straightforward. And next time, Councilwoman Earl will do a better job of chicken scratching. Thank you.
And before we get started on the next one, I have a few comments I'd like to make. We didn't have any, did we? No. So the next one is considerable, consideration and possible action, providing direction again to staff on possible modifications, the zoning ordinance regarding community residences. So I've been following this bill, SB 1308. That bill recently passed out of the committee to deal with inspections on these homes, and it was a six-to-one vote. Checking with my legislator, that was a bipartisan support of that bill. So that bill is, in all probability, going to be passed. The reason it's bipartisan, I think, is because it dealt with, the state is under a huge $2.5 billion Medicaid agency, cost containment system got built out of fraud by, cost to taxpayers $2.5 billion. And I think that's probably one of the big reasons why this bill has got bipartisan support, to have these inspections on these transitional homes. So my thought is to make a motion to table this until we find out what that bill does. Give some direction to our town attorney to follow that bill, and then we deal with this, and not get in over our skis right now on this, until that bill passes.
I second. Thank you for saying that.
Roll call, please. Oh, is there any other? I'm sorry.
If I have something to say, something getting?
Yeah, go ahead.
What? What now? I'm sorry. You kind of just, you didn't even-
Excuse me, if you need a council member to make that motion, I'll make it. I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure, because normally you don't. So, thank you.
So I want to make sure we're clear about language here, and I think I understand the intent of the motion. It's, right, it's not actually, it's not actually table, I guess. It's motion to postpone or to continue. And so as to that, we vote on, what does it say? Yeah, you, for motions to continue, it's debatable only as to the proprietary of post- propriety, excuse me, of postponement. Motions to continue to a definite time shall be amendable and debatable as to propriety. I don't know. If there's a comment on the continuation of the motion, go ahead. That would be my recommendation.
Councilwoman Earl.
I don't know the law, so I just, I just-
I'm questioning whether I, now I'm questioning whether I know the law.
I just want to make a comment as well. I thought this was just a discussion here tonight, too. But becoming aware of SB 1308, and where it's at, I agree. And that's all I just, because I, I mean, knowing that it is, it's not legal for us to have unannounced inspections, I wouldn't want to do that without this, you know, what we're going through, and going through this, the legislature. So I think that's the best avenue.
And Mayor, if I can add to something on that, again, I know it's debatable only as to the continuing the item, but I do think it's a wise course of action. It sounds like there's consensus tonight on that, especially considering that part of that bill, as I recollect the last time I looked at it, is supposed to be not only ADHS performing inspections, but being able to engage third-party contractors. That's a, that's a big deal for actually getting these done in a timely and efficient manner. So I think you won't be waiting long to see if you take a wait-and-see approach. I think it's wise.
I agree. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McMahon. Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes, to postpone.
Councilman Watts?
Aye.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, item D is consideration of possible action related to any of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns legislative bulletins. Does anybody have anything they want to add to any of that? Councilwoman Kelly Vianakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would like to put some input on this. This is based on emails that I think myself and the council has received this week and what happened two weeks ago at this town council meeting during the section of the meeting when we were relating it to the Arizona Cities and Towns bulletin. At that time, there was a recommendation that a House bill regarding Make America Healthy Again was, we wanted a letter on that. And I think, at least for myself, I was a little uncomfortable on the process that we went through there. I think normally these proclamations and these letter-writing suggestions are things that are pretty bulletproof. You know, we don't like cancer, we like the humane society. They're pretty much things that we can find pretty quick consensus on. My concern, and what some of my concern of my constituents was this week that I heard from, is that this wasn't an uncomplicated bill. The first thing is, we didn't even have the correct bill name that we were going to get the letter written until Councilmember Skilicorn straightened that out. And then we didn't even know the names of the.
Point of order.
Ingredients that went in there.
Point of order.
And so.
What's your point of order, Councilwoman Toth? Vice Mayor?
I believe unless the Councilwoman is suggesting a bill to propose or oppose, that arguing a previous action by the council is not a part of this agenda item.
Well, what we talked about last time should have been a future agenda item, maybe this should be a future agenda item, is too, but I'll wrap it up.
Point of order. We're not on future agenda items.
I just think that this council should be, provided a copy of the bill, we should get the research and scientific data that went to the legislature so we could review it ourselves. And then we should have at least a week to review.
Point of order, may I get a ruling on my point of order by the chair, please?
We should get enough time that we can review it so we can have a reasonable suggestion to our town manager on writing the letter.
We will take it under advisement, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to briefly, I don't really get into the weeds here, but we could decide what the council wants to do in a future agendas with this type of issue. You know, this could be skipped entirely. I don't think we want to do that. We could vote up or down, so we have a roll call on bills. There was a comment by another council member about the bill text, the scientific data and stuff. That is all available online. You know, it is available at the azledge.gov. We can see the text of the bill, we can see the, what the, either the Senate or House staff write up on the bill. We have the same information as the legislators. So that's something that we can look up ourselves. About the time, I don't know if that's realistic or not, but.
The information's available. We didn't know it was going to be on the agenda until that night, so we wouldn't have known.
I'm only going to do a little leeway to have the conversation, but.
One at a time, please.
Yeah, it could be part of the discussion, but I wouldn't be in favor of a week because, you know, frankly, I think the bill we discussed was already on a committee. And frankly, we're just, we're just sending a recommendation to the governor now because it's, it passed bipartisan, it's gonna, it's gonna go up on the board and overwhelmingly pass, maybe unanimously pass. So that is moot in a sense. So if we wait a week, you know, it might already be on the governor's desk. So there is some timeliness to this also. And we only meet every two weeks. So, you know, now the agenda, now the, well, there could be a striker, it could be on the board in three days and be done, and we wouldn't have enough chance to comment on it. So, you know, I'm just trying to add a little detail. I'm okay if we vote on those, but I think maybe the council should decide going forward. Frankly, we don't want to disagree with each other and, and I'll be honest with the public, it's the whole public that's here, I probably disagree with the council on more things than others. And that's okay. That's what democracy is all about, so.
If I may be the point of order person again, Mr. Mayor, point of order, we're not supposed to be discussing in this part of the agenda.
Okay, we'll move on then. Does anybody have anything about any of the current bills? And also that, we're all on those, most of us are on those legislative calls, so you could do your due diligence that same day as well with those bills.
But we don't know what's going to be called that night to discuss, so we don't know.
So you'll have a lot of work to do there.
We don't know until the end of the meeting that that's something that we want to send a recommendation letter on. There's thousands of bills and we can't be responsible to know them all. I have a hard enough keeping track of Fountain Hill stuff.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yes. Not sure if, well, these are two things that I thought would affect our town. And it was SB 1185, when I was on the ledger, sorry, the phone call. It's, they, this is to require bathroom facilities to be open 24/7 for the homeless statewide. The League is in opposition of this because they said it's not clear if like our, like the town hall would have to be left open 24/7. So I don't know if you, if we'd say anything to that. And the other one was SB 1228, with a moratorium on any new regulations or standards on single-family homes up to July 1, 2028. And I believe the League was in opposition of that as well. I think we'd, I would assume we'd want to be able to have control of all that, so I don't know if we, if it's something we always do. Do we always weigh in on those or, not sure. Anyway, don't want to cause a problem here.
I think we weigh in if the council feels we should, and the town manager.
We can always, we can always take the opportunity to weigh in. That's our privilege as our, as the representative body for Fountain Hills. To the mayor's point, is, are these two that the council feels like we want to make that, make that effort for and to follow up and, you know, follow suit with the League on these?
Councilwoman Kelly Vianakis, do you need to research those?
I don't want homeless people taking showers in town hall at 2 o'clock in the morning, so I think that's one of those kind of cure cancer ones. That's a pretty easy call.
Councilwoman Skilicorn?
Yeah, other bathroom one, I don't see an issue with. Ironically, after talking about it, I do, I do want to look a little in more into the zoning one. I'm 99.9% sure that I'll oppose it. And it looks like it's already opposed by people in our community, people, I can't, I don't see if I see any out of us. Oh, Councilwoman McMahon is already opposed to it. Ironically, I see people that are residents that are against it. I probably would, I just want, I'd want, and that would I personally do the research, so if we took a roll call, I'd either have to say that I'd go along with opposing it or I'd have to vote present.
Vice Mayor?
I agree. And with all the not-quite-the-topic comments in this agenda item, I get at least one joke. Curing cancer is also why I brought up the bill a couple weeks ago, so.
Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think that, I don't think it's necessary that we weigh in. League has already weighed in, so.
We'll move on then to council direction to the town manager. Councilwoman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I just, I want to double-check town manager. I had a couple, someone asked me if there's been any progress on the newspaper, public notice bids.
Yes, absolutely. Actually, I don't know that Rob is here, but our procurement officer has taken the lead on that. So to sum it up, there's a number of different types of notices we have to do and they, whether it's a construction bid, whether it is for zoning changes, so we have six or eight different types. So we're just going through to figure out if we have different requirements for each of those and how to manage that. So yes, it's absolutely underway.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I just got excited for the next one.
All right, if there's nothing else for the town manager, how about future agenda items? Vice Mayor?
I don't know if this technically would need to be an agenda item or if we just notice it to avoid open meetings, but I really strongly suggest a refresher on Robert's rules in the council procedure and decorum during meetings. I mean, we have had some interesting meetings this year and I think we could all use a refresher on how these are supposed to go. And then number two, I would like to propose to agendize the creation of and appointment for a three-person council work group to propose changes to Chapter 2 of the town code on the March 4 agenda. Chapter 2, for context, is the mayor and council portion of the code.
I'll second that.
Do we have enough, do we have enough votes to do that?
I.
Yeah, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three.
And Mary, you can also have the authority if you'd like to place that on the agenda.
Councilmember Earl?
Yes, I would like to propose the council revisit the sanctions imposed on Allen Skilicorn, which were brought up March 5, 2024, finished March 19, 2024, and I would request that this be put on the March 4, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
Are you a third?
I'll third it then.
Okay, I have both of those noted. Just as a preview, March 4 is going to be a big agenda.
Councilwoman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose a nickel motion for a DEI ordinance. I do have something that I can submit to the clerk and council.
I'll second that.
I would say I think we actually got word of that through the mayor and that is actually on the fourth agenda as well.
Okay, I just wanted, I had specific language I wanted to submit.
Okay, if that's something that you could forward to the town clerk, that would be great. We are a little bit under the gun to get that, to get that agenda out next week. With the short week this week, we're just a little crunched on time, so the sooner we can grab that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I understand timelines, but I just had something very specific.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McMahon?
Mayor, it sounds to me like the May 4 agenda is pretty, pretty packed.
March 4, yeah.
Excuse me, yes, thank you. So maybe we can redistribute some of those items so that it's not so weighted and we have more time to discuss matters.
Thank you. We will, we will take that under advisement.
Yes, why don't we, I'll pull together a sample, the tentative agenda and Mary, you and I can review that to see if there's anything that can be.
Pushed one meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Anything else? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.